Thank you, everybody, for joining me. And I will call the wolf and if you're joining us off on it, just let us know where we will get this. Ms. Angela?
Here.
Mr. Robina?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Gritzko?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Thank you. Okay. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda? Who will have a motion?
I motioned to pass the agenda.
Second.
Do we need to take a vote on that? Okay, voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. Nominate, first item on the agenda nominate and appoint chair for the term through June 30th, 2022.
I have a question. And I'm gonna see if I can say this, Commissioner Strassner.
Yeah.
Are you interested at all in being chair of this committee?
Commissioner? Um, I would actually like to nominate Lisa Catalbiano to be chair.
If I nominated you, would you want to be in consideration?
I just want to... I would, I would definitely take the vice chair position. But yeah, I think at this point, I'm gonna pass on the, the chair.
Okay, just wanted to check.
Thank you.
Mr. Lawless, what is, what does the time commitment look like for a chair position?
The terms run in current fiscal year, so through June 30th. On July 1st, some of the terms expire, so the membership could change. The chairman is already...
Well, as far as the commitment in between meetings, what does that look like?
Oh, it depends a little bit on the workload. There are certain remarks where I don't talk with the planning commission chair about anything, except maybe to check in about what's coming up off the council agenda. If there's some busy site time work to look at or complicated side details, I might help with the chair. It's also sometimes helpful for the mayor, the planning commission chair, to talk about workload. But I think it's quite flexible to have all the chair that's the...
Okay.
Steve seconded nomination, or I can't remember, Matt, that that...
Is there nomination for? Sorry.
Yes, Shannon nominated Lisa.
The second to be voted.
Yes, second. Or you seconded?
Oh, I will, if you'd be able to, but I think you seconded.
Okay.
Voice vote, please, all in favor?
Can we?
Discuss?
Yeah, discuss this for a second. One thing I just wanted to say as a new town councillor, I mean, a town councillor who's new to the planning commission. First of all, it's an honor to be here. And I'm excited to have a chance to work with all of you. And the experience that you all have is obvious. And I thank you, and I think this makes a lot of sense between your opportunity to, to be the chair. So thank you for choosing to say, agree along with, with being nominated. And I just wanna say, as, as the councillor representative, I'm happy to talk to the council. But I think you all have a ton of experience and I'm looking forward to, as the newbie on the, on the committee, learning from you all. And I think it's totally a pleasure. I'm excited about having you as chairman.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome, yes. Okay, any more discussion? Okay, let's move forward to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes.
As chair, that does create a vacancy in the life share.
Okay.
Follow up with that one, seeing if that's it. You would share our accent. Who's up on that permission?
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Shannon Strassner as the commissioner to take the vice chair position.
I'll second that.
All in, do we have a discussion?
Sounds wonderful.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, very good idea.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. Okay, next item on the agenda, review and approval of minutes from January 4th, 2022. That's a typo.
Thank you. Double duty on that meeting, so I apologize for the sudden shift.
That is hard to do. Would someone care to make a motion on these to approve or, or are there any changes to be made?
That we approved the minutes from the January 4th, 2022 meeting.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right, councillor Gritzko, we would like to hear from you on any relevant items from town council.
I think the most relevant is actually down here further at number six. And Matt, unless I'm missing something, I think I, I could talk about it now or I could talk about it then. Let me just say, so it's, you all already know that we have a meeting that the mayor has called on Thursday to talk further about the special use permits. We will then talk about it again in work session next week and in the following week, we will vote. I was, I had talked to Lisa about this and I wanna say the same thing to all of you as the planning commission. First of all, I wanna thank you for the work that you did. You did great work. I think you gave us a great proposal. I'm, would like to see it be able to pass in our town. Obviously, there's been lots of discussion about it. But I was, wanted to invite any of you all, if you had any further insights that you wanna add post your passing it, whether it's something you shared tonight or whether it's something you share in the, the coming sessions, whether it's this coming Thursday, the following Monday or later. Would be very open because you all are the experts. You have spent the time. You've done a lot of great work. You've given the town a great proposal. It's no secret that the town is decades behind in adding new housing. And your understanding of that need and the way that you presented the proposal, I think, was very good. I regret that I didn't understand the, the nature of the opposition before. I would rather see you all more protected from what happened. And I regret that, but I do not think that the town hopefully learned the lesson from that experience and hopefully that doesn't happen more in the future. But this proposal is a good one and the town did, the citizens did come and hear a presentation a couple Saturdays ago. Some of you may have heard that presentation. If you have anything to add, again, whether it's tonight or in the coming weeks, I would very much be interested in your perspective. Any new things that you might add or thoughts that you have related to the proposal as we approach the next couple of meetings. So I just wanna throw that out there.
I'd also like to say a little something, and that is that, you know, I'm very new to the commission. And one of my first votes in the commission was to make the recommendations for Lynnam and Bird. And I don't know how anybody else feels, but I, I agree with you, Dan, that, you know, I've kind of evolved in my decision about this. And obviously, we've made our recommendation. I'm not at all opposed to what we recommended. I just wanted to say that, you know, I hope to, you know, really understand a little bit more about all of it. I really appreciate these meetings coming up. I know it's gonna be a pretty difficult decision for the commission, but I just wanted to say that I'm looking forward to being a little bit more sure in my votes going forward. So, but I do stand behind what we recommended. It's just, it's a hard and evolving issue. So I'm glad we're all going to be together in these meetings to come to, to get it all in, so.
Thanks. So the Thursday meeting, the special meeting, what is the purpose of that meeting? And then the Monday, what is the purpose of that meeting?
The Monday meeting is our normal work session. And the idea that, Miss, I think the mayor could speak for it, as he called it. But I think, if, Mr. Mayor too, if you'd like to make a comment about it in a moment. But basically, the meeting was called so that we would have the time to work through different opportunities that people might have. We've heard more information from the citizens. We're, as town councillors, doing more work research. Just like you, we have a couple, we have two new town councillors. Four of us have been around for a while, but two are very new. And it's a weighty decision to have, kind of have to rush into it. So to give the time for the research and Matt and the town staff have been presenting, getting information together that with various questions the councillors have. So we wanna give it a good look at and be able to have the opportunity to take enough time to pass it through. If we did it just in a work session, often things get convoluted because other, other issues come up. And this is so important, we wanna make sure that we have a meeting specifically devoted just to cover this topic.
Very good. Any other matters that are affecting this body? Okay. Thank you. Thanks for that report. Matters not on the agenda from the public? Is there anyone here to speak on any matters that are not on the agenda? Okay. All right, old business, special use permit application for gas station at 385 East Main Street. There is a public hearing scheduled for tonight. I would like to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to discuss this matter?
This year, possible. I was a builder, for this property. I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Thank you. Yeah. When this property was for sale, so I was considering, because I closed my business in the shopping center. And then I was thinking, probably this is a pretty good location. It's gonna, it was a really good business. Because I've been Scottville for like, almost twenty years, you know? So, and then I thought it was like, manually it will be the gas station I saw it before. But I talked to Matt, Matt told me that we knew. But that's the first thing I, pretty, my concern is, I know, I know this is the reason to be renewed, although I continue us. Because that gas station was never closed, I mean, it's closed, but the water and electricity never disconnected. And then the owner kept it like that, pretty, pretty good shape. So I was considering probably that was just continuous store in there. But, you know, when you come here to discuss the result, I'm sure there's a good reason for that. I mean, I'm basically, you know, I filed, I feel I have an application, I paid the fee. Just see if anybody will agree to become a gas station again. Or just not, like, just get that company. Another thing is, when the Rockies, when I was here, the Rockies was a gas, was a gas station company. So, and it's been closed for years, I mean, three, four, five years. And I don't know if that one is resolved or not. The other one is not resolved, why this one is resolved? So I was like, you know, just consider if the policy change from, from previous. I mean, I have no anyways, but I'm just like, got why it's made to resolve. And then, and then you and I'm sure I'm gonna just keep as a gas station company store as whatever was in there. Fried chicken, and all the other stuff, you know?
I heard you got the, did you get the recipe for the, the fried chicken?
Yeah, yeah, I, I talked to, I think Stanley. Yeah, she, I talked with her when I, you know, went there. She got a walk through the numbers. I called, I should say, I'm sure I'll come happy.
Oh, that's great. Well, I know a lot of people would be happy. Right.
Okay.
We are, one thing I'll say is, we're thankful that you want to continue doing business in Scottville. As a, as a town councillor and as a town, we really do thank our business owners and people who are here. And the, as our town recommend, our staff recommends this. We think it's a, a good thing because you're giving opportunity for people. So thank you for continuing your interest in Scottville.
Yeah, I'm so happy that I've been doing business in Scottville. I mean, I'm the mayor. I know him since I started the Chinese restaurant, you know? So I'm really happy and fortunate to do business in Scottville.
I have a question for you, just really quick. Um, you know, you've got, the, the GoCo is there. And then just almost right next door is the Main Street Garage where they sell gas. And then there's Lucky's up on the corner. Do you feel like there's enough business for that, enough traffic coming through there?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. I've been in this kind of business for years. I had, I had a gas station community store and I had, the store only has I had, I had a gas station convenience store and I had, the store only has gas, convenience store, no gas. So I think that the gas is just the draw for people to come into the store. And then I, you know, be honest with you, the, the store owners don't make a lot of, um, gas, money on the gas. If I can make it even, I'm lucky.
Right.
But, uh, I think the gas station is just for, for, for people to just, just pull them in.
Okay.
And then to get in, on the inside of store. I don't think that many use it for competition. I know people have their choice to where they want to go. And then in town right now, it's only two gas station here. And then I look at it like, you know, uh, the Lucky's really busy, you know, sometimes it's lined up this way, that way. So I think it's not the best that there won't hurt anybody, you know?
Okay, well, great.
You can call you run your business.
Yeah, I appreciate you telling me your thoughts.
So the gas station is by right. The special use permit is required because the parcels within the historic district. So that's. Why we're here tonight. So if we have questions relating to this special use permit, um. I know questions that have come up in the past are things about lighting, noise, hours. Does anyone here from the public to speak on that? Have questions?
Were, were there any, um, complaints from the townspeople? You know, we, there's some residences right across the street. Did the lighting cause any kind of, uh, problems? And I'm not really sure what you plan your hours to be. For the gas station, like whether it will be open until late at night or if it'll be kind of a nine P M. thing?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, I think, uh, I think it will start like, um. Five or five thirty to nine.
Okay, so A M. P M. Okay. The question or the answer? So. From what I understand, you would be open from about five A M. To nine P M. For the convenience store and getting gas.
Does that include twenty-four hour gas pumps?
Right now it's not. Maybe later. I'm betting doesn't have the. Pretty hard reading. For the power.
So I have a question that I don't know is directly related or may not be. I don't know. I don't think appropriate is the word, but anyway, um, Lucky's. Being right down the street, when they opened the market uptown, is Lucky's going to go away? Or are they going to continue to have a gas station and operate it there?
I'm not certain.
You're not certain? Okay.
It's, it could be sold as is and operated as like a cell phone. Or it could, it can be, but I heard from them, uh, could be.
Okay, because doesn't the market, they own this excellent, right?
Yes, so it's branded that way now and operated together.
Okay. I'm just wondering if, if the saturation, I think, you know, I mean, four gas stations for the town. I'm just not. Really sure how that goes. Um, and maybe that shouldn't be my concern, but if we're concerned about the historic district aspect. What are the restrictions with the historic? Area, just that there's no businesses without a special permit?
The, the reason for the special use permit has to do with the gas station not being a historic use. They, they go back some decades, of course, but, uh, before they mentioned the problem. So we, we think of it as being. A little bit more suspect in a historic issue and that's why there's this extra layer of permit requirement. Which outside of the special, the outside of the storage of the power plant. When either the food market was supposed to come to town, their restaurants and gas station were violated. They needed special use permits on their drive thru. Uh, and then to see those, but if this building were located. Here, uh, it would not need this permit.
I got you. So is Lucky's within the, um, historic district as well?
Yes, to, to Mr. Fang's question about Lucky's, like changing ownership or closing in the past and not getting this, I don't know why that was about. I don't know how long it was like.
Okay, I just was curious.
Sorry, they closed at least five years, right? They didn't close at least five years. And then they report, because I was, I was hard to find by that building, the gas station, the Lucky's, not fun. Um, I didn't, I didn't feel like. So I knew exactly. And then this, the previous owner of the longest, longest station, others, they closed.
One of the biggest difficulties we have as in a town, this would go back at. Uh, Mayor Grove used to talk about this would be unused buildings. Getting our buildings in use. So, so for example, if we declined, we would be dooming that property. And by dooming that property. It would be, it would be, I would say, a much worse decision because it's going to be there and it's. It, all it will be is an eyesore and instead of, I mean, I favor doing it, but I just saying if you take the opposite view.
I do too. I'm just kind of devil's advocate.
Yeah, well, it's again, the other thing would be different is if they were coming in wanting to build it new.
Yeah.
In a historic district. This is a historic. Place, even though it's, the historic district is there, but this has a track record of many years. So it seems simplified.
Yeah, well, and given the proposed, you know, housing and things of that nature. Kind of moves along with the growth. So that's good.
Was anyone in the public interested in speaking at the hearing before I close it?
Do we have any questions for the former? Mr. Montague? Hi, um, when?
Yes.
Thank you for being here with us tonight.
Sure.
Um.
Thanks for hearing me.
I think I just missed the GoCo because I moved here about four and a half years ago. Did, did it close down right about then?
Uh, it closed down about two thousand fourteen, so it's been closed for a while.
Okay, so it has been a while. Okay.
Right.
Um. Were there problems with the residents in that area? Did you have any complaints about that?
No. No, actually, we, we did not have any complaints from residents.
Oh, good. And, and the lighting, um, is it pretty well directed into the gas station area? Um, you know, so that it's not bright coming down the hill from six and all of that?
Um, there was some lighting in the back to light up the back parking lot, but the lighting in the front was pretty much just the canopy lights and under the. Under the eve lighting, which wasn't particularly bright.
Okay, um. All right, that's the only question I have.
Okay.
But thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you.
I do have one question for you and that was, how was your traffic, um, at that gas station while you were running it?
Traffic was good. Yeah, it was, yeah, I mean, we sold, sold a fair amount of gas there and a lot of chicken. So all, all in all, traffic was good, particularly on weekends, but in the summer time especially, but. But yes. Yeah.
The location has an advantage because it has that other street there. So it makes, it's a, and it's a slow street other than when it's, they're busy at the reeling and rafting over there. So it, it has a nice proximity and it gives that people to have a flow a couple of different directions.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
All right.
All right, is there any more discussion?
If there's no more comments, I'll go ahead and close the hearing. We can continue our discussion. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing portion and have a commissioner discussion on action.
So I would like to move that we pass the special use permits.
I will second.
Would you like to consider any, um. Caveats and restrictions, any, um, would you like to highlight any points that should be considered in the?
I don't have any, but I'm open to what others, others have. I was more just getting it on the table.
No, that's great. So we.
I would, I would want to see, um, uh, attention to the lighting, um, and the possibility of. That being contained as much as possible as well as, um, the noise that can be created by these gas pumps that you see with the TV screens and everything. That's something I think to consider, um, while I understand retaining the current pumps. In case that's something that becomes upgraded in the future, I'd like to, uh, have us consider that as well.
Is it the show that you don't like or do we have to get a, you want a certain show on there or?
I'd prefer to get him on camera, so.
Um, I'm worried about the noise. Well, while you're pumping gas, they do their thing, uh, which is fine, but when. I've, I've encountered some that are active for the entirety of, um, well, we're not talking about twenty-four hour pumps yet. But they stay active throughout the entire night and that's just what I'm wanting to avoid.
I agree with you. I, I think that, you know, it would be worth saying that we don't need that kind of thing. I know when I'm at the market at Mill Creek, I just get back in my car. Um, because I don't, I don't want to listen to all that. Um, it's. It's like watching TV back in the day with all the commercials. They're just really loud. Yeah, so I think that's a good consideration for noise pollution. How do you feel about those kinds of things? You like it that they have the ads and stuff?
Um. When, when I have the gas station, uh, I don't do any of the pipelines. I just, uh, I do a good business, so I just love it lots.
I just didn't know whether you had any plans to allow that kind of thing. I don't know.
He had said he wasn't going to upgrade it, I think, at first, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to do it like twenty-four hours. In my time, it probably shut off.
Right.
Everybody, you know, be so happy about it. When that started at five o'clock, I just served the crowd for breakfast. And then the time of people get out of the war.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so do we?
Is there?
Can you like specify that more? So how would we measure it? Uh, I just do whatever was in there as before, another table.
Okay. Um, I think it would be worth making some notes of the, uh, light pollution and the noise pollution. Um, just kind of it being a residential area. I don't think there's any. Um, intention to do that, but just putting that there. I don't know if you all feel that's warranted or not.
I'd agree. Um, I'm not sure how our wording, um, would go and I'd like to, uh, consult with Mr. Lawless about that.
Well firstly, do we have a motion right now?
There's a motion, but it didn't include that.
We haven't voted on it yet, but it's been seconded. So.
We.
Okay, so should we vote on the existing motion as is or is there an opportunity to amend and? And then vote?
Adding conditions would be in order.
Yeah, yeah, friendly amendment adding a, a condition, fine.
The, the town has light with, light ordinances and noise ordinances in place now. And the A R D is well equipped to work on historic violation pictures. If it becomes time to replace anything on there, if it can be, the shingles need work. So, um, A R D is still able to, uh, follow your guidance on the lighting condition.
Okay.
Um, the ways we already have, uh, noise violations, uh, in place and can enforce that. Cell phones now can get accessible meters on them that make that a lot easier to enforce. Currently, our general noise ordinance after, um. Uh, seven P M. Um, is an, an eighty syllable threshold at the residential district boundary. I, I have enforced that on like an idling tractor trailer truck that's part where it shouldn't be online. That's more than many decimals. If the, I don't know how loud those like gas pump radio displays are, but if, if because this site is sensitive, we wanted to enforce a tighter decimalness. I, I'm talking about sixty decimals now. And a whisper is twenty-five decimals.
So are you saying that we could give a more general kind of, uh, suggestion or recommendation?
Yeah, um, but notwithstanding the town's normal noise ordinance, because this site is in a more sensitive location. Before seven A M. and seven P M. It doesn't work by the time you choose.
Matt, clarify with me though, we don't have such a thing on Lucky's.
No.
Because it, I mean, I would just say fellow planning commissioners, to do something for this station that we're not doing for Lucky's doesn't seem. Equitable, so to speak. So in other words, if we're asking them to do something we haven't asked Lucky's to do, and I'm not suggesting we ask Lucky to do it.
I guess I was just, um, you know, thinking about it being more residential. It's pretty dark through there and would be a big change, but maybe that's just the. The way things are. That gas station's been there for a really long time, so.
I, I would actually recommend we don't do that, just, just for that same reason. Is there a way though that we, going back to what our other planning commissioner said online? Matt, is there a way that we can recommend something but not require it?
Put it in the record as a recommendation, but that's difficult for me to proceed in terms of, you know, enforcement, making sure that.
Well, well, we're simply recommending to the owner that he's sensitive to the neighborhood, which we think he would be. That's, in other words, that's, we, we're. We want to be sensitive to people who might be nearby and he's, he's not suggesting he's putting these kind of things in.
Yeah.
That's the thing. If he was going to do it, then we, so and it was since we're, we're debating a hypothetical thing at the moment.
Okay. I think as long as we've talked about it.
All right. Okay, moved and seconded. So let's proceed to a vote. All in favor? Do we need a roll vote or, okay?
Molly, I'm right?
Hi.
I should probably not be voting, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Matthew Johnson?
Aye.
Shannon Stresker?
Hi. Okay, motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We look forward to your chicken.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Montague. Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda, new business. Uh, reviewing home business regulations, zoning section five point two.
Could I provide a, um, final presentation on this topic from our graduate turn, Chris Lawrence, this wonderful researcher. This is wonderful, beautiful.
Thank you. So, I was, after reviewing last, I believe it was, sometimes with Bullock, he was asking about home occupation ordinances. Our current home occupation ordinance is a, is a Class A or a Class B. Currently now, a special use permit in front of council for a office space that would suit Class A with 1,500 square feet, 25% of the home area. But there's no, there's no room for controlled expansion of that space. Specifically for them, it would be, they, they have a, they have an ancillary building of a barn that would, of course, be more than 1,500 square feet. And the, the concern being that they would, they would not have, have enough room within that barn. So that's, of course, just a, a case, a case study or an example of what a home occupation building would look like. But it made us think about our current home occupation ordinances and where they're allowed and what they look like. So currently, those Class A and Class B are permitted within all three of our residential districts, Village Residential, Rural and Downtown Residential. After, after looking at some of the spaces in the downtown residential area, adding an additional 2,500 square feet would be the equivalent of a building, essentially, if, if not, if not more. And so if, if I live downtown and I had my, my, my living room used as a, as a small shop, that's, you know, up to 1,500 square feet is about all the space I needed. If I needed something larger than that, I would most likely want to find a dedicated commercial space to run my business in. So there are a few, there are a few recommendations for adopting a Class C home occupation, which allows for larger home occupation, home occupation space, that, that be permitted in, I guess staff's recommendation is that they, that be permitted in Village Residential and Rural Resident, Rural areas. However, not permitted within downtown residential areas. Happy to answer any questions we all have about this.
Can you clarify that again, Chris? So what you're saying is if somebody is operating a business from home?
Yes.
So there, are they working for a company, or are they somebody who, in other words, are they an extension of a business somewhere else? Or are they somebody who's creating a product, or what, what's the distinction?
It can, it can vary, but it's pretty slow impact. The, the Class B, oh, I'm sorry, the Class A. A, a good example of that is I, I actually tried to do this. I thought about moving this a few years ago in Charlottesville, is I was, I was wanting to do some side work. So I wanted to start, start my own business and make small furniture pieces, pieces in the basement of the house that I was renting. I would have needed a home occupation permit for that. So something, something that has no signage and is relatively quiet and, and is not a, is not viewable from the street, and it is only me. I'm not hiring employees. Fairly low impact. If I wanted to, if I wanted to expand that, I would move up to a, to a Class A home occupation, where I'm using more of my space. Maybe I, maybe I'm using half of my house, as long as it's below that 1,500 square feet. And maybe I have a helper with me, hiring one person. The, the recommendation from, or the, the request from Councilor Bullock was to see something greater than a Class A, something, something with more impact. And so that's, that's the, the, the major changes to that were the, the increase in square footage to 2,500 square feet and the increase in members, non-family members who could be employees from, from two to four.
Let me ask you again, one other technique, one other technicality to this, because one of the reasons I'm asking you this is because as we come out of COVID, the economic realities are different. And the real, the realities are, there's a lot of jobs. I'm one of them. You can be anywhere and have the job. And so if somebody comes, I'm gonna ask it again. So if somebody is working from their home and they're part of a company somewhere else, this wouldn't necessarily apply, but if they hired somebody, it would apply.
The single, the single person home office.
Right.
One person working from home is by right in every residential zone that is over Shenchede. And we have lots of people in town in that category.
Right.
When they're working for another company like yourself, you don't get your own business license as a contractor. If you wanted to spin off and do the same kind of work, but working for yourself, I would ask you to get a business license. And the town does have some interest in counting and regulating for the purpose of taxation. Sometimes they're a little hard to call.
And the reason I'm asking too, again, is this, this is a real consideration. I mean, the economic realities that we're seeing, it's gonna be different. And Scottsville may be the beneficiary of that change, because it, it makes our town much more accessible to a different understanding of the economics, not just locally, but internationally. So that being said, this is, if this would have been three years ago, this might be an academic conversation, but it's not an academic. This is a real, this is a for-real conversation about, because the other side of it is, how does this then relate to other small towns? I guess that's the question. What are other small, if we look at our VML people, what are they doing?
I looked at, I, I looked at Elmore County's home occupation rules. They have two classes, and they follow suit pretty similarly with Class A and Class B. Class B being pretty, oh, I'm sorry, Class A being pretty low impact. And I think Class, Class B having a little bit more of an impact. They, I think they're, the only, the, the largest difference was that they're equivalent to the Class A allow the home area to occupy no more than 2,000 square feet. Whereas ours is 1,400 square feet. So short, short answer is that pretty similar to Elmore County's. I have not looked at other jurisdictions, Matt, very familiar with other small towns.
This is pretty, this is pretty standard, and we would be liberalizing it slightly by making the space of the employee down a little bit bigger, which I think is in line with the trend that you described. The, the more radical, I guess, way of doing this is looking at what's called an accessory commercial unit, which is another purpose-built building on the residential lot. Like if I, if I had a big house and I wanted to build a bodega in front of my house to take up space and be a separate building, that's not something that we can accommodate now, and is more out of the way.
One of the.
But that's the trend that's moving, and like you say, is, well, why, why do businesses in the neighborhood, close to home and at walk, and more of this kind of distance is fit in to what used to be a segregated neighborhood?
And one of the reasons I, I mention this again is, I think this is one of the things I was, I might say this to you all, as planning commissioners, I was struck by the absence of this type of conversation related to the housing permits that we are, because where the change, I'm not saying from your part, but I mean more from the, the, those who on the, on the other side, that by failing to understand the trends that were, that are happening right now in the world, we would put ourselves in a bad position as a town. And, and understanding the very people in the future who may come and live in some of these houses that may be built in the near future are gonna be people who work like this, who are gonna be people who have opportunities, whether it's like I do with a company, as the trends of things are happening.
Well, don't you figure that all of that kind of fits into the buy right? Because, you know, you're not, most people aren't gonna have employees, and they're not going to use more than 1,500. Well, what moves you into a Class A? Just if you have an employee or two employees?
Class A, Class A wouldn't have any employees outside of your family members.
Okay.
Class, Class B, you, you grow, you grow in impact from A to B.
Uh huh, okay. And so C would accommodate the, the shoe plant, the shoe factory that, well, I shouldn't call it a factory, but the shoe business in the barn.
I believe Class B would, I'm sorry, Class, Class B would.
At present.
At present.
Yeah.
They are, they are buying the property because they know they have a beginning option, right? So they're not shutting down, but they expect to grow into the barn.
I got you.
They bought a barn which is bigger than 1,500.
Gotcha. So anyway, I mean, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. We need to anticipate what's coming. I just feel like most of what everyone's doing is kind of a buy right in the home, you know, business. And I would think outside of that, and any of these Class A, Class B, Class C would be a little bit more specific or, or not as ordinary.
And, and if, and if the warrant's examples, this furniture business grew and became a nuisance. They had too many employees and too much lot of equipment happening too often.
Right.
That's a good opportunity to deny a special use permit. You have to keep it just for yourself, just in the basement. You can't run a solvent in that level.
Right. And so in Charlottesville, given the density, there would be less need for a third class. Gotcha.
And, and if I'm understanding it correctly, for, if we're, if we're using our, if our shoe, our shoe business as an example, if they were to want to switch from a Class B to a Class C, they would have to come back. It's a different special use permit. You can upgrade, but need to have.
And so we still have that, yeah, we still have that control and that consideration, yeah, okay.
Well, thank you. That's helpful. I, I really appreciate that research. Thank you.
Now, so this has gone before town council, because you mentioned Councilor Bullock.
Check-in at work session.
Okay.
We, we gave a committee report last month, and the council provided some encouragement to keep working on it.
Gotcha, because we had discussed this, so you brought it back to, gotcha. Okay. Thank you. That's really awesome. I don't actually see it saying that down, nevermind, it's on the next page. It, I was gonna make a comment, but it's on the second page. All right.
It's gonna be added to rural and so to village residential.
It takes, it's, yeah, the, the tax change here takes a little bit of puzzling, made it a good.
Yeah, yeah.
To, to accomplish this, we need to do three things. First, to define what a Class C home occupation is. And then give the particular rules for how you review that, that is a special use permit. And then make a decision about which zones we block with it. So the recommendation is that this sort of larger home business would be appropriate for possibly rural areas and possibly Village Residential, but not without having four issues. But a lot of times it's very small, all put together. So if you have a big small business idea, you should get a value sheet commercial open up.
Yeah.
And I, I feel okay about giving that back to somebody to pass on the story.
And so the recommendation on downtown residential to remove the current special use permit status for Class B, that means it's no, Class B would no longer be an option in downtown residential?
That's, that's right. The, the, the one person home office would still be, because those are pretty invisible. But as we, as we thought about it, if we, if we don't want four employees and 2,500 square feet, do we really want two employees and 1,500 square feet either? We have small resale workshop spaces down town or that size. I don't think council's been in place to have to kill larger home businesses downtown yet. But you might consider that, too. Do you wanna go ahead and take a walk with people as well?
Well, what about places like the house that's for sale right now? Oliver Kushner's house? That looks like it could be a business on the first floor with that. I guess that would be different, because that would be a special use to convert it to commercial or mixed use, spot zone?
Good question. We do have a mix of something.
Yeah, I guess the zone might be helpful, okay.
I think that probably is already some commercial.
Okay.
That would be, definitely reports, if you wanted to do a larger business and a building that would look like a house, go ahead and pursue a commercial. It's not, that would be a little spotty, but our, our preference plan was called for a fine-grained mix of uses in that downtown neighborhood. So you could go either. They would still have options, but would they look for a special use permit for a home occupation? Or would they go ahead and rezone it commercial and then get a permit to live there? You do it either way.
Okay. I think we should rezone. That sounds great.
Um, sorry, I had a question. Um, for, the way that I read that was that we would be removing, the recommendation is to remove the current special use permit status for Class B in downtown residential, not that we would be removing Class B as an option totally.
Oh, you see, that's unclear. So you, you think that means that Class B home occupations would become that, right?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, that, that was wrong.
Okay, gotcha.
Commissioner Johnson, this is what you had suggested last meeting. What are your thoughts on it?
I am very much in support of adding this to provide extra leeway for businesses as they begin to grow. And I think that it's, that we as a town are particularly well-suited to this kind of an amendment, because we have the rural setting, we have the space, and I am very glad that we're talking about this. I personally am very much for it.
I think I, I'm definitely for adding the Class C. I think what's bothering me is taking away the Class B option for downtown.
You've got flexibility and just understand that it's powerful, that maybe you should be scrutiny almost. And it could be that you keep it as an option, but end up not approving very many of those special use permits. That's okay.
Ms. Strausner, what, you were considering leaving Class B for downtown residential. What is it that you envision that being used for?
Um, I don't, I, I'm not actually envisioning anything right now. But I think if it's already there and, and it already requires a special use permit, I, I don't see the, the harm in leaving it as is.
Shannon, are you gonna have like a 2,500 square foot garden shop in, in your backyard?
Yes.
That was happening. Okay.
It's bigger than my. No, I, I'm, I was, as you, you know, before, when I was thinking about this, I was trying to imagine what that would possibly look like as a home business in the downtown area. And I couldn't think of anything just off the top of my head. I mean, the, the example I was thinking of is maybe like a garage, you know, but I don't think anybody would have enough room or space to run a garage out of, you know, like a, a repair service out of there.
I, I could give you an example of how long it grows.
Sorry, Matt, sorry, can you repeat that?
Yeah, an example of how long it might grow. So there are, there are a number of academics living in downtown, for a council, who are heading their retirement. And they might do archival or consulting work as a home business. But then they continue to get older and still want to live in that house and do some of that work. So they hire on another person to help with computers or strive or be a research assistant. Once they hire that office worker, there are different kind of homes in town. You might not want to say, you can't do that, you have to go get office space. It's okay to have a research assistant come help you in your own office.
So that would be an example of a Class B residential?
Class B permit for that, say that.
Simply.
Simply because of the employee.
Well, I, I like the idea of not flip flopping back and forth. And since it's gonna come through a special use permit to the commission, then I think it would be easier to manage without. I agree with you, Ms. Straussner.
I'm of the same school of thought.
Okay, so we have a recommendation for town council?
I think the problem is an important change. It does still need a proper public hearing. So the action, if you wanna follow up on this, you have to have a private public hearing.
Do we, do we wanna move forward to public hearing on this?
I'd like to recommend a public hearing on this zoning amendment.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
I'm not.
All right, let's do it. Motion passes. Let's do it. It's unofficial. Okay. There are two special use permit applications up on the agenda for 74 Valley and 496 Valley of use for the same individual?
Same applicant.
Same applicant.
Yes. Welcome Ms. Carmel Reeder to the meeting, um, joining us online. Thank you. Mr. Reeder also architectural review board on Thursday last week and got significance of appropriateness approved to this work. But um, I'll, I'll invite her to share about her business plan for these companies. Thank you for joining us here.
Hi. So, um, yeah, we are interested in, we're the contract purchaser for 474 and 496 Valley Street. And uh, we would like to put an Airbnb on the first floor rear of uh 474. And then there's currently a unit above that. There would be a second Airbnb. And then the um, the uh, the switching station, the town's original switching station would be the uh third unit. And um, I think the reason we think this is a good, well, first of all, the building is falling around and around itself. Both of those buildings. And so there has to be some logical uh end use that would allow us to do a massive renovation to these buildings so that they don't continue to deteriorate. Um, and oh, sorry. Uh, there we go. Um, so, so the plan for um the, the street, just to give you kind of a sense of what the, the overall gist of things um for our overall goal is, um, is to create a really beautiful street frontage along Valley Street, retain a small commercial unit in the front of 474. And the reason why we think it's smart to, um, and by we, I mean my husband and I, but he's actually in New York right now. But um, but anyway, the, 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 I, I think it's nice to retain a commercial identity on the front of, of Valley Street so that it's not, so that the building, that, that building could look like a house or it could look like a commercial building. And I think for the sake of the commercial corridor, it's nice for it to actually have a commercial entity in the very front. That said, um, I was looking through, you know, UVA did a study of basically the, the fundamental problem that Scottsville's having, which is that, you know, vacancy is, I don't know, 70% or something. And they suggested that a different or residential use occupied some of these first floors. Um, so there's not so much commercial space to lease. And I also think when, um, so there would be a very small, very cute, well-built out commercial space in the very front that could, that would be, by virtue of it being small, it can also be affordable. So it could have a quirky use. I think the other thing is, you know, if you were to take the whole first floor, you know, we're not really interested in, say, putting a competitor to the batteau on the first floor. I think that our goal here is really to see the town thrive. That's what attracted us to, you know, we just really fell in love with Scottsville and we're kind of waiting for somebody to, to buy some of these buildings and do something. And so, and, and nobody ever did. And so, um, so I mean, we're, we're definitely not looking to kind of undermine the batteau or undermine the coffee shop. I think um, the, what would be great about the Airbnbs is that they would you know, bring more customers to the existing businesses that already exist. And then on a secondary note, you know, I'm an architect and a designer and I had a really thriving practice in Washington DC before we moved here during COVID about six months ago. And um, you know, so part of the concept is that these would be really special and well-done, beautiful units and they would double as basically, um, actually, Matt, would you mind scrolling down the PDF? Um, so they would double as, so basically everything inside each Airbnb unit would, each one would have a theme. And the uh, art, the furnishings, everything inside the Airbnb would be for sale. And so they would double as kind of mini furniture art galleries in the town. And I think that it's kind of like the DMV, you know, the most, um, the more uses you bring into the town, I think the better because, um, so these, these, um, these units would be by appointment only. So you could, you know, shop by appointment only or they, or you could, you know, visit Scottsville and um, you know, shop your, shop your Airbnb. I think the more uses you bring into town, the more people you bring into town and the more, you know, the more people discover Scottsville and maybe go across the street and have a glass of wine at the batteau or, or go down the street and get a cupcake. So um, so I think that's generally speaking what um, what our goal is here. I don't know if there are any questions or if that makes sense. So the, the little, um, the little switching station, I think is the cutest building in the whole wide world. And so, um, you know, it would be, I think it would be lovely to walk down Valley Street and see something, you know, not derelict and falling apart down that alley, but actually something quite charming. Whereas this perfect little restored switching station and the ideas that the art and the furnishings on the interior would reflect its, you know, kind of industrial past. And um, well, I have a thing for climbing rooms. We'd like to grow climbing rooms on the side of the building.
I cannot picture this building, but does that building have any windows in it at all? Is it in the back?
You can't see it from the room.
Okay.
I think it's exciting to see your interest in coming to Scottsville and I applaud your efforts to take these buildings that have a lot of interesting back history and to give them a new opportunity for the future. So thank you. They, these are, seem to be really nice ideas.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, they're, well, the switching station, I guess you maybe have to be an architect to love the switching station. But I think it's, I, I think it's an absolute, it's really unique because it's a switching station. And so it has this really rich history, even though it just looks like a little tiny thing. Um, so.
Well, and something, like you said, it's, it's fallen down around its years. It's, it's a repurpose that and to revive it is a wonderful thing.
And um, the, the, these 474 Valley Street, my understanding from the current owner is that it was, at one point it was a hotel. So I think it's um, consistent with the, you know, it would be a use consistent with its historical use. I, I do think the nice thing about bringing some tourists into Scottsville, not that you have to have all tourists or something, but you know, I think that um, if somebody's coming here to stay at a fairly high-end, you know, kind of hotel-ish establishment, they are really not coming to cook their own food. They're not coming, you know, Food Lion has enough business. They're probably coming to eat and drink at the establishments that are on Valley Street. And I just think that that would be also, I, I think, you know, I would like to see, you know, two more tables taken up as, as a batteau, um, personally. I mean, maybe things also. I'm sure he would too.
Ms. Reeder, Matt here. I have a question about the floor plan. On 474. Do you propose um, one unit downstairs using this downstairs entrance and another unit that's larger upstairs using the upstairs entrance? Is that the layout?
Exactly. So all of the units, the, all of the Airbnb units would be entered from the rear. And so that the front commercial space would really retain its commercial identity. And I, I think in my mind, that small commercial space, we're working with a few people, you know, I think it would, you know, like I said, it could be small, perky retail. It would not really lend itself to a full-on food establishment because it would be very small. Um, and I think uh, you know, by, so entering in the back necessitates that the wall here where this one arrow is pointing, you know, the wall between Peter Sherman's building and, and this building, you know, that needs to be a charming, you know, little passageway that you kind of draws you in and is not just kind of like the road to a miserable alley. So I think part, part of the idea is that you really create interest, not just on the street front, but also back on the alley on the other side of the B store and then also on this little sidewalk area here. Um, so as part of the, the, the architectural view board was, you know, quite lovely and um, I think these little signs are gonna be really alluring and charming, you know, combined with, of course, just renovating the building and, you know, fixing everything basically. So.
So, so that I'm a hundred percent on the correct page here. We're talking about four units. There's a commercial unit which will be the front and they want to leave that commercial, but sort of cut it, I suppose, and use the backside for Airbnb, use the upstairs for Airbnb. So that's three units in that building.
Yes.
And then the building in the back converting that to Airbnb.
Correct.
So we're talking about four units, three of which you wanted to make Airbnb, one of which commercial, remains commercial.
That's it. So most recent uses, there was a real estate office here. I don't know how much of this building they used. And this building has been vacant for a little while. It was most recently a studio apartment. I think, what is it? 4,500 square feet total?
Yeah, exactly.
Open plan.
But it's been, it's been demolished. So I mean, none of this is habitable now. You wouldn't wanna spend 10 minutes in there, frankly.
And the only way to make it profitable for you would be for those three units to become Airbnbs?
Yeah, we really can't close on it or renovate it unless it just, there's, you know, there's really no demand for office space these days because everybody works from home. So it's a current use as an office. It's just a complete non-starter. There's incredible office vacancy all throughout, you know, you look at uh, office listings, that's just not happening. Um, I mean, I guess you could just let the building continue to decay and um, you know, just become a derelict building that gets painted every once in a while. Um, and maybe you could rent it for super cheap office space, but even then I don't know that anybody would rent it as an office. Um, and that's really not, I'm a designer. I like to make things beautiful. I don't really wanna, I don't really wanna buy this building just to kind of, you know, do the bare minimum and let it kind of continue to crumble. So, um, and then apartments, it's not possible to do the type of renovation this building needs on apartment revenue so that wouldn't work um for us. Maybe somebody else, not for me though. Um, and you know, in terms of commercial, I think the issue is, you know, you look at the green building, that's what, 4,000 square feet of first floor commercial, I believe. Um, we're also buying 330 Valley Street. So there's, you know, that's, that's used, but um, how, kind of half of it is like semi-used. And then um, you know, there's, there, there's the whole, uh, the, the old post office is vacant. That's about 2,000, maybe 3,000 square feet of vacancy. Rayhound Station's vacant. That's another 500 square feet. So you can kind of see how, you know, a commercial, I, I think they would actually help the town to take some commercial space off the table and in place of a commercial space, put people who are gonna spend money at businesses.
I, I would say absolutely. So if Mayor Grover were here from years ago, he would say hallelujah. So yes, thank you.
Ms. Reeder, you had a financial detail in there that was interesting to me. Is there a, is there a reason in the financing for this project that makes it lean towards the tourist lodgings versus a residential apartment that I can say that?
Well, I just, you really can't, um, uh, I mean, I guess if, look, if like Bill Gates wanted to do it as a charitable act or something like that, make that work. But unfortunately, our family, we're a hardworking family, you know. We're, we're just, we're not anybody fancy and uh, we need for it to make some sense. We can't, we can't, we can't just do it for fun.
I understand. Do you think you have more monthly revenue on tourist lodging than on tech?
Yeah, tourist lodging is what makes financial sense.
Yes, I, I don't have any proof on that over here.
I think it, it makes a lot of sense and it makes a lot of, um, you know, especially since the, um, any other temporary lodgings have closed down. Um, you know, that's always been the big thing with uh, the Batteau Festival and all the, the other things that we have going on in the town, there's no place to stay. Um, you know, when I have family come to town, they have to stay with me or go into Charlottesville. I would love for them to have a place, you know, to, to go and be. But I'm wondering if we should uh, maybe get Shannon on the line and talk a little bit about her thoughts about um, temporary versus long-term housing and what the needs are for Scottsville.
Yes, um. Um, yeah, I, so I don't particularly have large concerns about these, these proposed units, but I think this brings up, um, just because we do seem to be getting, you know, a, a steady influx of applications for um, conversions to Airbnb. So I think for the future as a town, we should probably have a, a bigger plan for what we want to see here in, in Scottsville as far as the short-term rental market goes versus the long-term rental market, especially during the housing crisis that we're seeing all over the state and country right now. So I don't know if that needs to be a separate meeting where we talk about um, our um, the, the impact of short-term versus long-term, um, how many units we do have um, on Airbnb in the town already uh, versus how many, how many rental options there are. Uh, just lots of questions like that. I wrote an email earlier today, which is, I'm sure what Molly was referring to, but um, I think, I think it would behoove us to get our head around what we wanna see here in Scottsville. Um, I have heard a couple of, of residents grumble about the fact that there seem to be so many Airbnbs popping up in town. So I don't know what.
As opposed to long-term, you mean?
The, no, the Airbnbs, the short-term.
Yeah. I mean, they're popping up and people are grumbling because they're not long-term?
Yes, yes, exactly.
The perception that it's taking from the stock for our, for residents.
One of, one of the things I will say, sorry that I was clarifying, one of the other former mayors chimed in with another hallelujah. That was uh, former Mayor Gill who's on the call there. But just to say again, the issue of buildings that have been vacant is such a problem for the town to have somebody with the passion that you have, Carmel. To me, it's exciting to think that you came to town, you wanna do this. I think it's up to you to decide what's the best way to use it economically. And if you think the Airbnb is the way to do it, then go for it. So I, again, what we could have a, we could have a debate as to whether you should have this or that, but I don't have the money that you're putting into it and I'm thankful that you do. So I, I'd like to get us out of the way to allow you to do that. So I'd like to get us out of the way to allow you to do that.
I think one thing, I'm an extremely pro housing person. You will not find anybody more pro housing than me because, you know, when I were coming from Washington DC and when I moved to Washington DC, anybody could afford a house there. And by the time we left, you know, a starter house with a broken dishwasher and sticky kitchen cabinets is $2 million, full stop. And how did that happen? Well, every time housing was proposed, there was a ruckus about it. And so housing wasn't built, but more people moved in and more people moved in. So I think that, you know, I think the housing issue, you know, I don't really, this isn't going to solve the housing issue one way or the other. I think that I think that maybe some of the other proposals before the town are perhaps more salient in terms of housing families. But but I think that this particular building has just fallen into such a state of extreme disrepair that, you know, there just, there has to be a proposal that's financially viable. And this is, we were really brainstorming, like, what buildings could we, you know, what can we do to help, you know, something that's crumbling uncrumble, basically? And this is just what we came up with. So for us, like, we really can't afford to thoroughly renovate this building and make it into apartments. So that's not really, it's not kind of an A or B. It's more just like if we haven't closed on it yet. So I think, and I do think the furniture portion may seem a little bit unusual. But I actually, I have a very thriving practice in Washington DC. And I actually do think that it would be possible to generate some real interest and a little bit of publicity and really create an interesting, beautiful thing where we work with local artists and and just create one more kind of draw into town again that would, you know, wind up benefiting the businesses here.
I do agree with that on the business research work that I've got, that running a furniture store or an art gallery standalone is difficult. But if you're also earning nightly rental income and people can cash drive the art and the furnishings in that way, it will help offset. So that that seems like a.
Exactly. I mean, there's. I think there's almost no chance, like, if this were just to be a furniture store, I don't think there would be the volume. But I think that, I think that in a town like this, you really have to be creative and find ways to draw people. And I thought the DMV was brilliant because, you know, go to the DMV, go across the street, get a cupcake. And so this is a totally different concept, but a similar idea in that you're kind of trying to multitask within the same building.
Is it appropriate to give a a move?
Erase the roof?
No, so propose that we pass or?
Yeah, so it would be moving it to a public hearing if you wanted to. That would be the next step.
Next up, a public hearing, okay.
Yeah, could I just? I I am for this proposal. I just want to say that. But I do want to know what we could do to have a larger discussion about Airbnbs versus long term rentals in the town of Scottsville. So and I would also like to, I have I have several questions about this, such as, you know, how many do we want in in Scottsville? How many currently exist? Are those businesses being taxed and, you know, are they paying taxes to the town? If they aren't, what recourse does the town have to levy levy those taxes on those those owners? So, you know, I I would like to have a larger conversation about this before we continue to get more and more Airbnb requests, just so we have a clear plan of how many we want in town. So that it doesn't end up impacting our housing market. Because that has become a problem in a lot of areas. So I don't want to overlook that. Okay.
I think the town does tax transient lodging. I was actually looking through the town.
Yeah.
He also like, clearly the town could use revenue. The town taxes transient lodging. So I think it's a revenue generator for the town.
It does if you are registering your Airbnb with the town, which you are. But there are, we have had a conversation, I think, before when Ms. Catalbianos' Airbnb came up for vote. And Matt had brought up at the time that he looked on Airbnb and noticed that there were people advertising Airbnbs who weren't paying taxes on them. So I just, I just want to know, like, what is the town's recourse for levying taxes on those businesses? And kind of get that cleared up and and figure out if there is a good way to figure out, like, what's the breaking point, you know, at which, at which point does Airbnb become a nuisance to a town? So I just think it would it would be nice if we had a plan moving forward for that.
Well, we are the planning commission, so I like your thinking.
I definitely. I thoroughly agree with Ms. Strassner, especially as a renter myself. One of the reasons I came to Scottsville was because I was able to find an affordable, long term living situation that fit me and allowed me to become a part of this community, not only in this position, but as well as an employee inside the town and a participating member of the community. And I would like for us to consider the impact of this on our long term house or long term rental stock. Because I want to make sure that we in the future, we'll plan for the future of having enough rentals to bring old people into the town who are in a similar situation, who aren't ready to buy a house, who don't necessarily want to have the maintenance of a property yet, or who just want to give the town a try and see what's up. So I definitely second what Ms. Strassner is saying about we should consider what those ratios are and how we can better promote one or the other, depending upon what we find.
In the meantime, I love Ms. Greer's proposal and wonder if it's appropriate to make a motion. I'd like to make the motion that we put together a public hearing, correct? For the proposal for 474 Valley Street? And are we doing both that and 496?
Yeah.
Okay. So that is my motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? None? Very good. Motion passes. Public hearing, when would that be set for?
And I do want to say thank you, Ms. Greer, for coming up with a really cool business idea. Because that is, I often think, I wish these vacant buildings were filled and we had some cool businesses in there. So thank you.
Thank you. I think it'll be, hopefully it'll be really cool and beautiful.
Yeah, yes. And I think most people, when they start Airbnbs that I've seen, don't do what what you've done as or proposing to do as far as renovating it and and bringing other businesses in as far as, you know, having art gallery and in the building and that kind of thing. So I think it's very unique.
I love it too. I have to contain my enthusiasm because I am a professional. But I I'm, I love it. I absolutely love it. So.
Oh, good. Well, the front part, I don't want to say anything if it's not, nothing's a done deal yet. But I think that front little commercial part can be very special too. Because I think part of the problem with some of the commercial spaces is that to do a renovation that is really world class and like, you know, good looking, it's very difficult to do that in 4,000 square feet if you're just a small business. But it's actually, well, we intend to build that space out for whomever the tenant ultimately winds up being. And, you know, if you're talking about 500 square feet, you can actually make really cool 500 square feet. That's possible. So I think the scale of it could be quite charming. I'm very enthusiastic, obviously.
Well, we, well, I am.
Thank you. So just so I understand, the next step is a public hearing and then it goes back to to you all?
So we would have a public hearing next month on the first Monday of the month, March 7. And if it gets approved, we will be making the recommendation to move it to town council, who will then see you again, and they will have to have another hearing. Unfortunately, that's the process. It's a little cumbersome and a little slow. So just bear with us a little bit on that, please.
Okay.
That's right. The target made then for final approvals, everything proceeding normally on our final line would be April 18th.
Oh, okay. Is there any way for us to move that up? Or is it better for us to do it during the regular meeting?
Special meetings or joint meetings. We have occasionally called those with town council in the interest of working something out together more quickly.
It just means we do the same meeting the same night.
And it turns into a long night for the for the town councillors.
I'm sure.
It's normal, but.
Yeah. Well, I mean, if I I'm all about trying to move things through. I don't want to have to make people wait any longer than we have to. So if town council is interested in doing a joint session to expedite, that's something that I would be.
Yeah, if we can take it to the work session next week and we and we get an okay on that, then it could be done that way, correct?
Well, and even the public hearing moving that up.
We just overlap.
Would there have to be two public hearings?
No, they were over. They were the same meeting.
Yes, you can meet together at the same time.
Okay, I was just wondering.
I do caution that you're safer doing it for something that's not controversial.
Right.
Right. Well, I'm not trying to circumvent anything. I merely educated myself. Because it does sound like a very long process, but.
Government is generally not fast.
Yeah, but can't we move to change those kinds of things? We can't, you know, be the change you want to see.
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree.
All right.
I will say one thing that encouraged, my husband and I have been watching these meetings actually. And and one thing that encouraged us to actually, just for what it's worth, take action. And we were really, you know, I think one thing that's happened is like, nobody buys these buildings. Nobody buys these buildings. And so then nobody buys these buildings because they look around and they're like, hey, wait, why is nobody else buying the building? And so, you know, hopefully by buying some buildings, we can instill some confidence. But I think that what gave us the move forward was watching, you know, watching the meetings here and feeling like, you know, you know, dealing with, you know, kind, reasonable people. So thank you.
All right. I like that.
Who's the current owner of this, these properties or this property? Is it, is it two parcels? Because it has two addresses or is it one?
Yeah, it is. It is technically two parcels and it's owned by an LLC. And and actually, who actually is the owner? We're working that out. That's actually something we're working out before we can close.
Yeah. Well, in the meantime, we'll we'll discuss it with the public. That's great.
Okay, so we've got a hearing set on that. Any other matters that we'd like to discuss? You're baffled. Okay. Okay, one, one thing that I'd like to ask on future agendas. I I love the idea of if we know that we're going to have people here, let's try to get them out as fast as possible so that they can go about their days. And if we have any stuff that's just us, let's leave that for the end. That's my personal opinion.
Understood. Zapp Bolick chairing architectural report has been very fluid with rearranging the agenda based on who's there with with respect to the time. People who are homeowners and have a question for the board and then want quick resolution. So he is very free with skipping around on the agenda with respect to who's in the room. I can certainly try to arrange it if I know that guests are coming, try to put those items up first and then add work session content towards the end. But also, if you if you see someone here and want to move items forward to the top for that reason, the chair is welcome to do that.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. All right. So I guess we have nothing else to discuss.
So I would like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed? No? All right. Meeting adjourned. 8:37 PM.
Thank you all so much.
Thanks, guys. That was fun.
You guys have a good night.
You too.
Good night.